Hello.
We are not recording.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon. I will call to order the Seattle City Council meeting. My name is Deborah Juarez and it is 2:01. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Salant.
Present.
Councilmember Strauss. Councilmember Herbold.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Mosqueta. Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Council President Juarez.
Here.
Both in present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to our agenda to presentations. There are no presentations today. And going through public comment, colleagues, as you know, we're doing the hybrid system and we will take the remote callers first and then the in-person folks that have showed up for public comment second. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have for remote and how many speakers do we have for in-person?
We have eight remote speakers and five in-person.
Okay, so we have eight and five and is that thirteen?
Yes.
Is it? I'm sorry. So let's do this. Let's give everybody two minutes and we will start with the remote speakers. Everybody, you have two minutes and Madam Clerk, I will now hand this over to you and you can start the recording and the instructions. Thank you.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salis peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue that it's your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You would then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when ten seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
For the remote public comment period is Howard Gale.
Good afternoon. Howard Gale with SeattleStop.org commenting on our failed police accountability system. Today is day four of the King County inquest into the SPD murder of Charlene Lyles. Five years ago, the pregnant mother of four was murdered in her home by Seattle Police just four weeks after Seattle's police accountability legislation was passed. My op-ed in the South Seattle Emerald last week documented how twice as many people experiencing a behavioral health crisis were killed by the SPD over the last nine years versus the nine years prior to that. Five years ago, Councilmember Herbold promised to quote, "Find a new way of doing things so that we actually get different results," unquote. Council President Juarez, you said at the time that quote, "We will demand accountability, transparency and community oversight and not allow this to happen," unquote. Yet your police department went on to kill Albert Rodriguez Jr., Danny Rodriguez, Ryan Smith, Terry Caver, Derek Hayden, and the person still unnamed on Beacon Hill in January. All people experiencing a behavioral health crisis just like Charlene Lyles. All quote lawful and proper. Councilmembers, you promised after Charlene that the results would be different and they have been. They have been worse. If you want to pay justice to the memory of Charlene Lyles on the fifth anniversary of her murder by the SPD, then embrace the future of police accountability that dozens of other US cities have post George Floyd by creating direct community control of police abuse investigations, police discipline and police policy. Look forward to a future of justice and not backwards to a mythical past and promises that we now know five years later were clearly false. See SeattleStop.org for how to do an initiative in Seattle. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yvette Dynish and she'll be followed by Valerie Veloria. Velma Veloria, excuse me. Our next speaker is Yvette Dynish.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Yvette Dynish, District Two. And I never got the chance to congratulate Council President Juarez on being council president. I signed up for transportation with my concern and succinctly. I've been asking for quite some time whatever happened to the pronto bikes. With that being said, if we still have them somewhere in the city and you wish to disperse them, I have my own nonprofit and space to help with this. And then lastly, the Rainy Beach Link to Lake project has been going on since 2017. The money is there finally. How can we get the permit process to move quickly so they can go ahead and get this built? That's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Velma Veloria and she will be followed by Chris Ray Lee. Velma? Velma, you may need to speak or press star six.
Madam Chair and members of the council, my name is Velma Veloria, former state representative. Here today representing Filipino community of Seattle. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in favor of Council Bill 120343. After opening the multi-generational Filipino community village, a senior housing community paired with STEM education space for youth, Filipino community of Seattle is ready to build family-sized affordable housing for working families in the community. We had a landowner who was ready to sell his property and offered Filipino community of Seattle first refused to buy it, but requirements and existing funds were a roadblock. We did not have the needed funds to buy the land. With the Jump Start Community Self-Determination Fund, we were able to buy the land and have time to create a plan for affordable housing there and build our organizational capacity for future projects to serve the community. Thank you very much and please pass Council Bill 120343.
Our next speaker is Chris Ray Lee, followed by Sarah Ward. Chris?
Hello all. My name is Chris Rowley. I am the Director of Campaigns and Advocacy at the Center for Election Science. Here to speak on Initiative 134. The Center for Election Science is a nonprofit, nonpartisan think tank dedicated to empowering voters and strengthening our democracy through voting reform. We believe democracies thrive when all voices, all voters' voices are heard. We support voting reform efforts across the country through a competitive grant process. This year, we awarded support to Seattle Approved and I-134 in large part due to their clear benefits for the citizens, their how organized they were and how much it could do for the future. Independent voting or independent polling shows that over seventy percent of Seattle voters would support this reform. That would put it in line with St. Louis, Missouri, which passed it with over sixty-eight percent support and Fargo, North Dakota, which also passed it with sixty-three percent support. Nonpartisan voting reform rarely has an advocate. Even though it's crucial to the health of our democracy and our group, the Center for Election Science works every day to fulfill that role. Spent the last ten years studying ways to make elections fair and as representative as they can be. I-134 will make Seattle's elections among one of the most representative of the country, probably quite possibly the most representative. It will put Seattle again as the leader of elections and reform and representation in government. If you have any questions about approval voting, please reach out to me. You can find my contact info on our site, electionscience.org. I'll leave my contact with the council and please reach out to me anytime. Thank you very much.
Our last speaker that's registered as present for remote comment is Sarah Ward. Sarah?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Ward and I'm an attorney and I've been a Seattle resident for over ten years. I'm here today to express my support for Initiative 134 too. I'm a volunteer with Seattle Approved and I helped to get this initiative on the ballot with a team of other great volunteers. I got involved in this in 2021 because if passed, this change will help ensure that everyone in Seattle has a voice in our elections. In addition to my day job as a lawyer, I volunteer to support folks who help, who want to vacate their criminal records on a pro bono basis in partnership with the Urban League, Civil Survivor and the Public Defender Association. I also have helped raise funds for the Social Justice Fund Northwest and through a giving project. So I'm really involved in the community and I really believe that I-134 will ensure that everyone in Seattle can express their preferences, including underrepresented groups. This change is also really important to me because it's inherently nonpartisan, it's candidate neutral. And it's really one of the very few reforms, I think, that doesn't try to help or harm anyone and that everyone should be able to get behind. It just makes elections function the way we all believe they should. Candidates who are supported by the most voters are the ones who win. And then last is one to mention that Washington state law requires that Seattle hold a primary election and then a top-two runoff and this change is consistent with that requirement. So I'm super excited that this simple change will create the most representative elections possible within state law today. Thank you for sending I-134 on to voters. Have a good day.
We do have one more remote speaker who is now present and that would be Mallory Rush. Mallory?
Mallory?
Please press star six.
Hi there. Sorry, I was coming off of mute. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Good afternoon. My name is Mallory Rush. I'm calling from St. Louis where I was the campaign manager for our own approval voting initiative back in 2019. Our initiative adopted approval voting for our primary elections in St. Louis and I'm excited that Seattle is weighing this improvement as well. Our initiative was on the ballot back in 2019 and passed with a really incredible sixty-eight percent support. Because the change was so simple, our election officials were able to implement it over just two months and we were able to start using it essentially immediately, which was really exciting. So we were able that following spring to begin to use it. We have had now multiple primaries with approval voting. In our 2021 mayoral primary, St. Louis had four candidates and voters supported an average of one point five candidates on the ballot. And the really significant vote splitting that we experienced in 2017 basically entirely vanished. And so that was really exciting to see, especially in a city that is forty-five percent black and yet very rarely elected black candidates. This resulted in the very electing our first black female mayor. Approval voting helped make elections fair in St. Louis. So that primary winner better represent everyone. We would love to see Seattle voters have the same improvement. Thank you for your time.
We will now move into the in-person public commenters. Once your name is called, please approach the microphone and state your name. Our first speaker is Marguerite Richard.
My name is Marguerite Richard and I'm going to speak about how I was maliciously harassed downstairs on the first floor by a security guard that I don't know his name yet. But it was kind of weird because you all see me down here a lot, don't you? And just the fact that he had the nerve to say, "Oh, you can't go upstairs." Well, don't you have to go upstairs to get in here? I said, "Wait a minute, I'll push this button right here on this elevator and go to the second floor." Then I stopped over in the council office and told him what was going on, okay? There's like a rumbling in the heavens right now because I don't think you want to do this to me. So then I end up in here and then I asked the other lady, I said, "Go tell Ms. Simmons about what they doing up in here because it's not right." I want that Black Lives Matter sign taken down. Because anytime you can come up in here and have somebody you don't know being offensive like that. All we were doing is sitting down, minding our business, waiting for the chamber to open. I said, "Oh, so you want me to be like a little scarecrow on the Wizard of Oz?" No. The Lord is my light and salvation. He's my salvation. Of whom shall I fear? Of whom shall I be afraid? You hear that, Jim? So anyway, we have a problem here with just getting through the door. Yes, there's a pandemic, but if you don't want people sitting down there waiting to come upstairs for anything, you need to put a sign up, but not no Jim Crow sign. In other words, don't do that again because there's people going to prison right now. We don't know how this inquest going to turn up with Charlene Lyles' death. We're not having no taser but a bullet at the time that you killed her, okay? I'm just saying it. I'm saying it. God help me.
Our next speaker is Michael Fuller.
Yes, I'm Honorable Michael Fuller, sue our jurors and you note that for the record and let the record reflect. All of you vanilla aliens on the city council and Bruce Harrell got these foreigners maliciously harassing Black Lives Matters. This is not the changes or the dream Black Lives Matters can believe in with Bruce Harrell. Who does Bruce Harrell think he is? Now he's going to deal with Honorable Michael Fuller and Margaret Laura Richardson in violation of the American Disability Act. I done told y'all this before. Violation of thirty L O Y L period A period L period A period. Nine seventy-seven, nineteen ninety-six and ninety-seven. Mean, man. No one is above the law when it comes to the ADA. Ain't America with disability act, that's the ADA. And rehabilitation act of nineteen seventy-three. Who do you vanilla immigrants, aliens think y'all living in Black Lives Matters community? Behind Bruce Harrell. But Bruce Harrell don't want to sit. Now we go to Bellevue, the man is always sitting there. Bruce Harrell don't want to show his face because he know he's violating his own oath of office. But see, Bruce Harrell is not above the law. Bruce Harrell going to deal with Honorable Michael Fuller because I'm very articulate with this law. You note that for the record and let the record reflect.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman. Thank you.
I'm not going to have it in my neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm totally confused. Why you don't show my sign, my yellow David Star in my face? Totally confuse me, yep. Because I did this in King Country every day and everybody happy, but you're not happy. Have same TV, what you're not doing. This is very interesting. Yes, I talked to you three thousand times. So you are Nazi with Gestapo principle. Zihail, my dirty double A führer, a damn Nazi fascist bandita and psychopath. What is you doing is a pure psychopathic and you closer and closer right now come to real German Nazi. This new proposition for election is a nightmare. You will doing exactly same what is Hitler and German Nazi did in Germany from thirty T. No need more election. You move to four year. Next step is will be no election. It's exactly what is you doing. Because I saw talk to you three thousand times here in this chamber. Seattle is the number one fascist city in America with Nazi Gestapo principle. Is it seven hundred fifty thousand freaking idiot, you know what it mean, assaparicin? Because they scared. They are cockroaches, you know what it mean, enslavementality. You told him doing this, they will doing this. I never see percent of people who don't have a different opinion. It's not exist in Seattle. Nothing. Seven hundred fifty thousand zombie slave and you can do it with them, everybody. So right now I speak to everybody who not pre full freaking idiot. This is four year election will be finito with American experiment done. It's it. No more America. No more before, no more America and now in Seattle. Zihail, my dirty Nazi.
Our next speaker is Logan Bowers.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Logan Bowers. I'm a D3 resident and volunteer co-chair of Seattle Approved, addressing you today regarding Initiative 134. So great to see some of your faces in person again. Initiative 134 is a nonpartisan ideologically neutral voting reform that will make Seattle's elections the most representative in the nation. I ask that you place this initiative on the ballot without delay so that voters may choose to adopt this reform and strengthen our democracy. Elections that center voters and not special interests are key to the health of our city and I-134 is before you today because it does exactly that. With this change, candidates will have strong incentives to listen to and work on behalf of all voters in their district, including groups that are frequently ignored or overlooked. I am proud to be stewarding a reform that is supported by over seven out of ten of my fellow Seattleites. I believe voters should be the ones to determine how our elections are conducted and that the high turnout November twenty-two election is the most appropriate vendor venue. So please place the initiative on the ballot. Thank you very much for your time.
Our last registered speaker is Mary Fox.
Thank you for hearing me, councilmembers. My name is Mary Fox. I'm a longtime resident of West Seattle, thirty years. In the last year, my house has been broken into repeatedly, over and over again. I've contacted the police multiple times and they haven't done a thing. Over and over, I've called them. My identity has been accessed, my safety deposit box has been accessed. My bank accounts have been accessed, my retirement accounts have been accessed. And I, again, I have contacted the police regarding this and they haven't done anything. They barely entered my house. They haven't acknowledged this in any way, shape or form. My house has been vandalized, valuable wood has been removed from my house, flooring has been removed, support structures have been removed. And again, nothing has been done by the police to help me. I'm at the end of my rope. I'm terrified. People are still entering my house. I came home the other day and my door was unlocked and I'm extremely cautious about locking my door. So someone had entered my house while I was away. Additionally, someone is applying toxic chemicals to the interior of my house and the exterior of my house when I'm gone. I'm at the end of my rope and knowing how to deal with this situation and I'm coming to the city council for assistance because I am actually afraid for my life. I'm hoping that I'll get some support from you and maybe some pressure on the police because honestly, I don't know what to do at this point. I've been down through all the ropes that I need to go through and I'm trying to do work with my banks. I'm trying to contact the police again and to no avail. Please assist me.
And that concludes our list of public speakers today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Public, we have come and colleagues, we've come to the end of our allotted time and our speakers both remote and in-person. So public comment is now closed and we will move on to the next part of our agenda and that's adoption of the introduction referral calendar. If there's no objection, the introduction referral calendar is adopted. Hearing and seeing no objection, the introduction referral calendar is adopted. Moving on to the consent calendar. My understanding is that we have one item on the consent calendar and that is from the Finance and Housing Committee, Councilmember Mosqueta, and that will be an appointment of Cara Valer to the Housing Levy Oversight Committee. Other than that, there's nothing else on the consent calendar. Is there any of my colleagues would like to remove anything from the consent calendar?
Clarification, Council President? There is a payroll bill on the consent calendar.
Oh, there is? I'm sorry. Can you read that into the record as well? I didn't catch that. Madam Clerk?
It's payroll bill.
I just, on my agenda, just has one item.
It's at the very top, right near the margin. It's Council Bill 120352, the payroll bill.
Thank you. Okay, so we had two matters on the consent calendar. One was the payroll bill and one was the appointment of Cara Valer to the Housing Levy Oversight Committee. Both of those matters coming out of Councilmember Mosqueta's committee. Not hearing any more comment whether or not any of my colleagues would like to remove anything from the consent calendar. I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Okay. Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. The consent calendar is therefore adopted. Thank you. Thank you for catching that, Madam Clerk. Moving on to adoption of the agenda, there's no objection. I move the agenda will be adopted. Hearing and seeing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Moving on to our agenda to committee reports, my understanding is that we have ten agenda items. Item number one is myself, Councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Lewis has item number two. Councilmember Herbold has item number three. Councilmember Peterson has items four, five and six. And Councilmember Nelson has item number seven. And Councilmember Mosqueta has matters, agenda items eight, nine and ten. Madam Clerk, will you please read item one into the record?
The report of the city council, agenda item one, Clerk File 314495. The report of the city clerk on the certificate of sufficiency. for initiative number one thirty-four concerning approval voting for mayor, city attorney and city council member primary elections.
Thank you. I apologize for that brief moment there. So this item is coming from the council president's office and I will go ahead and read for the record what I need to say legally so we can move this item forward. Clerk File Three One Four Four Nine Five is a notice that Initiative One Thirty-four has sufficient signatures to go to the ballot. According to the city charter, the city clerk has twenty days from receipt of this notice from King County Elections to file the notice with the city council. This starts a forty-five day clock for council action on the initiative. In order to provide my colleagues with additional time to consider the initiative, I'm recommending that we hold this notice for one week. As a reminder, the city's election code, Seattle Municipal Code Two Point Zero Four Point Three Zero Zero prohibits elected officials and city employees from using their office for the promotion or opposition of any ballot measure. According to the code, we should refrain from discussing the merits of the initiative until we are actually voting to support or oppose the ballot proposition. That will occur at a future meeting, at a future meeting, excuse me, within forty-five days of the clerk file, within the filing, I'm sorry, forty-five days of filing the clerk file Three One Four Four Nine Five. I recommend that council members restrain from, refrain from discussing this initiative today. I move to postpone the clerk file Three One Four Four Nine Five to July fifth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to postpone the clerk file. The clerk, says the clerk Phil, but I think you mean file. The clerk file Three One Four Four Nine Five will appear on every agenda until the city council determines what action will be taken in response to initiative number one thirty-four. Will the clerk please call the roll on postponing clerk file Three One Four Four Nine Five until July fifth?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta? Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye. Thank you.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Should have waited for that. The motion carries and the clerk file is postponed to July fifth, twenty twenty-two. Let's move on to item number two. This will be Councilmember Lewis's legislation. Madam Clerk, will you please read item number two into the record?
Agenda item two, Council Bill One Two Zero, excuse me, Three Four Two. An ordinance authorizing Seattle Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement with Seattle Preparatory School to replace the Montlake Playfield and continue an ongoing relationship in the Montlake community consistent with the non-government agreement and attachment one to the ordinance.
Thank you. Let me, Councilmember Lewis, if you could just let me read something into the record and then I'll hand it over to you. The reconsideration of Council Bill One Two Zero Three Four Two is now before the council. Councilmembers, at the June twenty-first city council meeting, we considered Council Bill One Two Zero Three Four Two. The bill did not secure the needed five votes to pass it and Councilmember Morales moved to reconsider the bill. The motion carried and the council bill was held until this city council meeting, till the city council meeting. Pursuant to the city charter, the council will first consider the motion to reconsider. If the motion to reconsider is adopted, then we will move the passage of the bill as presented by the Public Assets and Homeless Committee. We now have before us a motion to reconsider the bill. Before I ask for a vote on whether or not the council should open up this bill for discussion and another vote, are there any comments on the pending motion to reconsider the bill? Okay, not seen any motion or any comments to reconsider the bill. The city council will now vote to reconsider passage of Council Bill One Two Zero Three Four Two. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
So, sorry, just to understand, this is to reconsider the vote, not the bill itself, right?
Yes, that's, is that, am I correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosqueta? Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries and Council Bill One Two Zero Three Four Two is before the council. Councilmember Lewis, as a sponsor of this bill, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Juarez, and thank you for that procedural overview. So I'll keep my comments to the substance of the legislation. This legislation was reported out of the Public Assets and Homelessness Committee a couple of weeks ago as a departmentally requested legislation to continue the arrangement between the Seattle Parks and Recreation Department and Seattle Prep with the Montlake Playfield located at Montlake Park in the Capitol Hill, Montlake neighborhood. Just as a little bit of background, a little over a decade ago, the precursor arrangement to this was that Seattle Prep would pay to replace a turf playfield at Montlake Playfield Park. And in return, Seattle Parks and Recreation would give exclusive access to that playfield for a string of weeks in the spring and a spring of weeks in the fall, string of weeks in the fall for school-related sports and activities. Otherwise, the space would be an open and programmable public park in accordance with the standard rules and procedures for all other Seattle public park facilities. The turf field wore out after a decade of use and wear and Seattle Parks is proposing to go back and do this agreement again and have Seattle Prep replace the turf field in exchange for the same programmatic access that they've enjoyed over the past decade. The only material change in this deal to the one that was previously negotiated by Parks is that Seattle Prep will provide fifty hours of community-based programming as part of the requirement for this arrangement. So it is a better deal for the city and for the public than the previous iteration of the deal. We did have a robust discussion about this legislation in committee. It ultimately passed out of committee with four votes in favor and one abstention. And I don't have any other comments on the legislation, but would encourage passage. And that's, there's the only remarks I have, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. I'm going to open the floor to any of my colleagues that would like to address Council Lewis's bill, reconsider, the bill itself. Councilmember Sawant, and then after that, we have Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you, Council President Juarez. As I said last week, when we were first discussing this bill, I'll be voting no on this contract. Our parks are treasure public resources that should be available for all. This contract gives a private school exclusive access to the playfield for a substantial part of the day, which unfortunately means that it will be unavailable during those hours for anyone else, such as students from Seattle Public Schools. New AstroTurf on the playfield is no doubt a real benefit. However, I do not think that outweighs losing public control of the space for so much of the day. So for that reason, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sawant. Councilmember Herbold?
Thanks. I did vote in favor of this in committee. I know in the committee vote, I believe Councilmember Morales abstained. I'm interested, I wasn't here at full council last week. I am interested to know what has transpired since last week. I believe there are some specific questions asked in the interim and just am interested to know the sort of the substance of the answers of the questions regarding the public benefit provided by Parks, if anybody has that information.
Before I move to you, Councilmember Lewis, I want to see if there's anyone else and then I'll move back to you to concluding remarks. Or would you like to respond now to Councilmember Herbold, Councilmember Lewis?
I can read some of the remarks that we received in response from Parks to Councilmember Morales's questions in the open session here today. I was.
Councilmember Lewis, before you do that, can you share that, the date on that? Cause I think we all received that memo, correct?
Well, yes, yes. The entire council, Council President, as you indicate, was CC'd on Paula Hoff's response to Councilmember Morales's questions. That email is dated Friday, June twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
And because there was a lot of public discussion at full council last week, I just think it's useful for the public record to hear what those responses were.
I think Councilmember Lewis is going to do that.
Yes, and Councilmember Herbold and Council President, I am happy to summarize the response, the responses that we received from Parks. So just indulge with me for a moment. I do have it available and in front of me. One of the questions raised by Councilmember Morales had been, how many agreements do we have that offer reserved access for private entity entities in exchange for some level of investment in the parks? Seattle Parks and Recreation responded that the following principles are used to assess the viability of the private entity investments, which are namely determining project impact to neighboring communities and their uses of the field, ensuring community field usage hours are maintained and are not reduced for the general public. Community benefits from a higher quality field with the investment. So weighing the benefit of the field against any potential lack of programming time. Consideration of the location of where the investment was going to be made. So, you know, what is the equity of how we're distributing these arrangements? Whether Seattle Parks and Recreation is in a position to make their own investment in the site instead of a private partner. The size of the investment and the entity being able to provide public benefits, which as we've established is a bigger emphasis in the renegotiation of the deal. They then provide a list of the current standing arrangements that are similar to Montlake, including Montlake. So in addition to the Montlake arrangement, South Park Playfield with Seattle Academy, Interbase Stadium with Seattle Civic University, Bar S Playfields with West Seattle Little League and the Magnuson Cricket Pitch with the Seattle Cricket Club. So five total arrangements across Seattle Parks and Recreation that have this kind of contract. The, and I won't go into the rest of the details, but if colleagues want to review, Parks did provide a significant amount of detail on all of those agreements in addition that they can review for the level of investment and public benefit that is detailed in the memo. The next question from Councilmember Morales was what analysis has been done on Seattle Park facilities to assess local neighborhood access versus private school access? And Seattle Parks indicated they're currently conducting outreach to assess what each of the local neighborhoods desire for park playfields. And this has also sort of been a component of the Metropolitan Park District outreach that we're familiar from that process. They track playfield use through hour use reports for known playfield users. And, you know, very, you know, high utilizers of playfields include public schools, private schools, youth organizations, adult rec leagues, Seattle Parks and Recreation, official recreation programs, and of course, just individual groups for private events. Seattle Public Schools have first priority scheduling rights through the joint use agreement for all Seattle Parks, which is a point that they note. But that excludes the facilities where there is a unique arrangement with a private partner. But again, that's only in a couple of scenarios, Montlake, South Park and the West Seattle Stadium. The final question, two questions from Councilmember Morales that were answered. How is the public benefit in this particular, the Montlake agreement calculated? And how are we measuring their success in providing a public benefit? And Parks responded that in the original agreement, Seattle Prep was not required to provide an explicit public benefit component. And the new proposal does enumerate, as I've indicated, a requirement of fifty additional public programming hours, which is a new component of the contract. And that is going to be tracked and recorded as part of the agreement. Upon entering into an agreement, this is the final question, Councilmember Morales asked. Upon entering into an agreement, what is the, how do we essentially assess the, and understand the equitable benefit to the community? So touching on the equity of these arrangements. And this is broken into several sub-questions. The first, what is the community outreach to communities of color to receive scholarships and participate in the sporting programs at the site? Parks responded that per the agreement, Seattle Prep will be reaching out to community centers around the city as well as schools in less advantaged areas with specific offers to participate in this supplemental programming. Generally, registrations run through their website for on-campus middle school camps, which is one of the things Seattle Prep is offering. Registration for lacrosse and speed and agility camps run offline to eliminate the barriers to entry, so more in-person recruitment. All fees for those camps will be waived for low income and disadvantaged youth. These camps are meant to serve as an opportunity to introduce new groups, new sports and spread fitness to underserved communities. The other sub-question in that category, what are the statistics regarding applications? A number of scholarships and participation. These public benefits will be tracked through an annual report. And the report requires Seattle Prep to track participation numbers, hours of service provided, volunteers' hours, number of programs provided and the cost associated with all the public benefits. So there are articulable metrics in the agreement that are going to be tracked and reported on back to the council as part of the agreement. Seattle Prep has operated programs in the past for the community at no cost. So there is a track record the organization has for this. So Parks doesn't anticipate compliance to be an issue. All Seattle Prep-run programs and events through the public benefit requirement will be free to the community. So there's no expectation of Seattle Prep charging for any of those services. And then the final sub-question was what in the past experience and methods of Seattle Prep in reaching out to youth within those communities? So what is the track record of Seattle Prep as a partner in doing this work? And the past experiences have been in conjunction with the Montlake Community Center, the Seattle Nativity School, Northwest Child and other nonprofit groups that are local to the Seattle Prep neighborhood. Seattle Prep has partnered with the Montlake Community Center in the past to provide student lead tutoring services for children of low income and marginalized backgrounds. Seattle Prep has worked with Northwest Child to facilitate programs dedicated to supporting people with disabilities with recreational opportunities. So that is the summary of Seattle Parks responses. Again, council members can review that memo that was provided last Friday. And the attachment of the public benefits template and matrix that is attached to the legislation is a good reference point as well to provide a summary of the details of the contract. So thanks for indulging that long recitation.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Is there any other comments? I just want to wrap up. I thank Councilwoman Lewis that, so formerly as Chair Parks, we did completely redo the public benefits piece that you see that's reflected now in these new agreements. So I want to thank Councilwoman Sawant and Councilmember Morales and Mosqueta for bringing some of these issues up. And thank you, Councilmember Herbold, for teeing up some of these other issues. And thank you, Councilwoman Lewis, for summarizing the memo that we'd all received. We did insert and make sure that Parks is, has a robust race and social justice piece, that the public benefits piece outweighs the private use of public benefits, that we track the progress and the success and the benefits in the use. And more importantly, as you shared, Councilmember Lewis, that we look at outreach not only to the communities, but working with community centers and any other public asset that the private entity is using the public space for. So thank you for that. Okay, so not seeing anything else. Councilwoman Lewis, is there anything you want to say before we go to a vote?
No, Council President, I'll rest on my previous remarks.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The bill passes. The, I will sign, the chair will sign it, I'm sorry, the chair will sign it. And will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Moving on to our agenda, to Agenda Item Three. I understand it's Councilmember Herbold's piece of legislation. Madam Clerk, will you please read Item Three into the record?
Agenda Item Three, Council Bill 120351, An Ordinance Relating to City Employment, Amending Sections 4.14.140 and 4.14.150 of the Seattle Municipal Code to Expand Eligibility for the Moving Expenses Reimbursement Benefit for Certain Individuals.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you so much. This is follow-up legislation to implement Ordinance 126589, requesting that the Seattle Department of Human Resources update personnel rules to allow the city to pay for relocation expenses for a broader range of salaries, not just the top tiers, as is the previous practice. This would include, for example, police officers and other hard-to-fill positions that are critical to, to performing and delivering city services. The Seattle Department of Human Resources drafted a change to provide the requested flexibility under the council's previous legislation. This bill would make the necessary changes to the municipal code to reflect those changes. As a follow-up, to implement the intent of the previous bill, I really appreciate Council President Juarez referring this to, to full council directly. And want to also direct folks to review the memo from Council Central Staff, Ally Panucci, about the legislation that she had sent already. Just again, noting existing rules, note that the, the reimbursement of relocation costs is, is applicable when the city is unable to recruit persons in the immediate employment area who possess the unique skills, expertise, and/or educational qualifications. As noted in the fiscal note, the maximum reimbursable allowance for qualified moving expenses is $25,049. And employees must relocate to a distance that meets the Internal Revenue Service's distance test. Typically about 50 miles to qualify. I encourage my colleagues' support for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Madam Clerk, I may, I may have jumped the gun on this. I have two page eights. So I think I was supposed to move to pass Council Bill and look for a second and then ask Councilmember Herbold to speak to it. So do I do that now, Madam Clerk?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. I moved to pass Council Bill 120351. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Herbold did speak to the bill, so thank you for that, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any other comments regarding Councilmember Herbold's legislation? All right. Not seeing any. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation. Moving on to the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee. It's Councilmember Peterson. It's Item Number Four. Madam Clerk, will you please read Item Number Four to the record?
The Report of the Transportation and Seattle Public Utilities Committee, Agenda Item Four, Appointment 02194. The appointment of Andrew Lee as General Manager and Chief Executive Officer of Seattle Public Utilities for a term to December 31st, 2025. The committee recommends the appointment be confirmed.
Councilmember Peterson, it's all you.
Thank you, Council President. Our committee unanimously recommended that the city council approve Mayor Harrell's nomination of Andrew Lee to become the permanent general manager and CEO of Seattle Public Utilities. This is Appointment 02194 on our agenda. And Andrew Lee is with us on Zoom this afternoon. As we know, Seattle Public Utilities is a $1.3 billion enterprise with over 1,400 employees that deliver clean drinking water and remove both wastewater and solid waste. Without these core services, a city cannot function. Because Andrew Lee was already serving in an important role at SPU when he took over the helm as interim general manager and CEO last fall. Many of us have already been able to observe and appreciate his ability to lead and manage this vital organization. His excellent performance is built upon a 20-year career that includes important work for the City of Bellevue Utilities Department, as well as a decade of service here at Seattle Public Utilities. As Mayor Harrell said when transmitting his nomination of Andrew Lee, he has the right combination of compassionate managerial skills, inspirational leadership ability, strong personal integrity, and technical know-how to run our publicly-owned utility with distinction. In vetting and ultimately recommending this highly-qualified nominee, our committee followed the very helpful protocols outlined in Resolution 31868 for mayoral appointments subject to council confirmation. As recommended unanimously by our committee, I encourage my colleagues to vote yes to confirm Andrew Lee as General Manager and CEO of Seattle Public Utilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Peterson. Are there any comments or questions for this appointment before we move on? Before we go to a vote, is there any closing remarks that you'd like to make, Mr. Peterson? And then after that, or Councilwoman Peterson, after that, we'll give Mr. Lee an opportunity to speak. Is there anything else you'd like to add before we go to a vote?
No, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointment?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Congratulations, Mr. Lee. You are now recognized to provide brief remarks to the council and the viewing public.
Thank you. I'm Council President Juarez, Transportation Utilities Committee Chair Peterson and members of the council. I'm honored and humbled to be here today and to have been confirmed for the position of General Manager, CEO of Seattle Public Utilities. And I want to let all of you know, I could, I'm extremely proud and consider it a privilege to work for the city of Seattle. This past year with news of water shortages in California, I'm constantly reminded how fortunate our city and region is to have a pristine drinking water supply that serves 1.5 million people in the region. And as you know, our utility services also include drainage and wastewater, solid waste contract services, and clean city services, which I believe are a hidden engine that enables our city and our region to thrive. I want to say that our, I work with an amazing team that starts with our employees on the front lines of serving our city. That team showed up to work every day during the pandemic, and they continue to serve our customers through every water main break, storm event, sewer overflow, and snowstorm. As you know, they clean up graffiti on our streets. They pump sewage out of RVs, and they connect with our communities. And our team extends to the folks in our contact center, our finance and budget team, our engineers, planners, and the many staff who work tirelessly to serve our city. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to lead this incredible team. And I pledge to do my best to serve our city and the department with humility, with compassion, a focus on racial equity, striving towards excellence and affordability, and a mindset fixed on innovation and continuous improvement. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, and congratulations. And thank you, Councilwoman Peterson, for shepherding this confirmation, this appointment through the process. Is there any comments that we have or questions are for Mr. Lee before we move on? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you, Mr. Lee. We will move to, on the agenda, to Item Number Five, which I understand is also Councilmember Peterson's. Madam Clerk, will you please read Item Number Five into the record?
Agenda Item Five, Council Bill 120345, An Ordinance Vacating a Portion of 29th Avenue Southeast and Southwest City View Street in West Seattle. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peterson?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as I mentioned at our council briefing yesterday, Council Bill 120345 is a request from the Seattle Department of Transportation to grant final approval to vacate a portion of 29th Avenue Southwest and Southwest View Street to facilitate the installation of a storage facility adjacent to Port of Seattle Land in West Seattle. In August 2017, the city council granted conditional approval, and petitioner has met all those conditions for that storage facility. Our committee unanimously recommended approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Councilwoman Peterson? Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. I was absent from committee last week, but I do support the action. I do want to note, because there was some coverage about this upcoming action in the West Seattle blog, and a commenter was under the impression that one of the conditions was to remove all six bollards. And we have confirmed with Council Central Staff, who's reviewed the vacation conditions, and they in fact require them to remove only three of the bollards, which they have done. So just wanting to reflect, want the public record to reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. So, Councilwoman Peterson, this is the Portland, right?
It's adjacent to it, yes.
Adjacent to it, okay, right. Okay, so there's not seen any other comments. Madam Clerk, or Councilwoman Peterson, is there anything you want to say before we go to a vote?
Thank you, but no.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. Moving along on our agenda, Item Number Six is also Councilmember Peterson. Madam Clerk, will you please read Item Number Six into the record?
Agenda Item Six, Council Bill 120346, An Ordinance Relating to Seattle Public Utilities Declaring Certain Real Property Rights to Be Surplus to the Needs of Seattle Public Utilities. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, as I mentioned at our council briefing yesterday, Council Bill 120346 is a request from Seattle Public Utilities to grant a temporary easement and a smaller permanent subsurface easement to King County for a narrow tract of land on the east side in Bellevue for the main purpose of constructing and maintaining a sewer line. Our committee unanimously recommended approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Not seeing any. Councilwoman Peterson, is there anything you want to say before we move to a vote?
No, thank you.
Sure?
Well, I do have a speech prepared again, but I, I think I'll let it go. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Come on. Councilmember Peterson, let's hear it.
Four score and seven years ago.
There we go.
There we go. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation. Moving on the agenda to the Economic Development, Technology, and City Light Committee. That's Councilmember Nelson. Madam Clerk, can you please read Item Seven into the record?
Report of the Economic Development, Technology, and City Light Committee, Agenda Item Seven, Council Bill 120349, An Ordinance Relating to the City Light Department Advancing Certain Objectives of the Treaty Between the United States of America and Canada Relating to the Skagit River and Ross Lake and the Seven Mile Reservoir on the Ponderay River. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Okay, this is a, this is an exciting vote. So some background about this. Washington State and British Columbia share the Skagit River. And Seattle City Light has several dams along the Skagit, the northernmost being the Ross Dam near the B.C. border. In 1984, B.C. and the city of Seattle entered into the High Ross Treaty, which established the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission to protect the environmental integrity of the transboundary watershed. Well, a mining company, Imperial Metals, owned mineral rights in part of the Upper Skagit Waterfret in British Columbia, known as the Donut Hole. A 14,000-acre area surrounded by protected parklands in the Skagit Valley Provincial Park and B.C. Manning Provincial Park. And the treaty mandated that the SEAC acquire and retire those mining rights. So backed by a large international coalition of U.S. tribes, Canadian First Nations, and nongovernmental conservation organizations, as well as by all levels of government, including the city of Seattle and the state of Washington on both sides of the border, the SEAC successfully negotiated a price of $24 million Canadian dollars in December 2021, of which Washington's contribution is $5.75 million. So what does this bill do? This bill authorizes City Light to accept $4.5 million from the Department of Commerce and convey those funds and $1.25 million of City Light funding to the Skagit Environmental Endowment Commission. So put another way, passage of this bill will ensure the protection of the Upper Skagit watershed from pollution from mining in perpetuity. And I urge that my colleagues vote for this.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nelson. I also sit in your committee, and thank you for the opportunity for the panel that you had when you had it in committee to walk us through with the PowerPoint about what this bill entailed. Are there any other questions from my colleagues for Councilmember Nelson before we move on? Not seeing any. Councilmember Nelson, is there anything you'd like to say before we move to a vote?
I'd like to thank everyone at Seattle City Light who worked for years on this, as well as all the other environmental organizations that really helped push this through to the finish line.
Thank you. It's good to see you out there. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation. For the Finance and Housing Committee, I understand that Items Eight, Nine, and Ten, Councilmember Mosqueta is excused, and Councilmember Herbold will be speaking on her behalf. Will the clerk please read Item Eight into the record?
Report of the Finance and Housing Committee, Agenda Item Eight, Council Bill 120343, An Ordinance Relating to Housing for Low-Income Households, Adopting Amended Housing Funding Policies for Housing Programs and Investments. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilwoman Herbold?
Okay, I'm going to read Councilwoman Mosqueta's comments into the record. They're not going to sound like me, but I'm.
Well, it depends on how long they are. So how long do you got there?
All right. I'm so excited about this legislation. An update to the housing funding policies to establish a new jumpstart acquisition and preservation program, which we have dubbed the Jumpstart Community Self-Determination Fund, because that is exactly what it is designed to do. This fund will provide permanent acquisition and preservation funding, along with funding for capacity building and technical assistance, so that organizations are able to secure land and/or secure buildings to develop community-driven housing with full ownership and self-determination. This legislation is the result of many conversations we've had with our Community Housing Roundtable, comprised of community-based organizations who are working to provide housing for their communities, some of whom have joined us at our robust committee discussion on June 15th, including El Centro de Raza, Filipino Community of Seattle, and SCIDPA. The program is designed to support affordable housing projects like Plaza Roberto Marastas by El Centro, the Liberty Bank Building by Africa Town, and the recently-opened Filipino Community Village. Community-rooted and community-serving housing paired with services, small business space, learning space, and more, to help root communities in place. This is the culmination of two complementary policies. First, the Jumpstart Housing Spend Plan, which designates 13% of housing funds annually to be used to establish a community-focused acquisition development and program support fund for housing rooted in and serving communities most at risk of displacement that addresses past discriminatory policies and practices such as redlining, restrictive racial covenants, and other discriminatory patterns that have negatively impacted BIPOC communities in Seattle. The second is the slide that was included in the 2022 budget, requesting the Office of Housing to identify modifications to the city's housing funding policies to address policy barriers, including partnership requirements for small, community- to address policy barriers, including partnership requirements for small, community-based developers that may have difficulty accessing the city's acquisition funding. One thing that we've heard from the Community Housing Roundtable over the past year is that requirements in our existing Acquisition and Preservation Fund make it very challenging for community-based organizations to get the acquisition, acquisition funding needed to secure land or buildings, which is the first step in creating community-driven housing. This fund will allow organizations to access permanent acquisition funding, so they can seize opportunities to acquire land or buildings when they arise, and allow them time to get a development plan in place to best serve the needs of their communities. One, one of the things I'm most excited about this funding program is that it includes the long call for capacity building and technical support funding, so that community organizations have support to navigate the acquisition and development process and our, and our building skills as developers along the way. This is how we increase our system-wide capacity for more community-rooted housing. Many thanks to council colleagues for your support of these efforts. Thank you to the Office of Housing for your great partnership on this program, and for your shared goal of creating more equitable funding streams to support community-driven development. Thanks to Erin House for working on this policy over the last two years, with Tracy Ratcliffe as well. Thank you most of all to the community organizations we worked with in developing the Jump Start Progressive Revenue and Spend Plan and the programmatic details for this Community Self-Determination Fund. Thank you.
Are you sure there's not anyone else you need to thank?
That, that's all I've got on the list.
That's all you got? Okay. Um, are there any comments from my colleagues before um, I hand it back over to Councilmember Herbold if there's anything she wants to close with? Okay, not seeing any. Councilmember Herbold, is there anything else you want to add before we move on to the uh, to the vote?
Sure. Um, I just want to um, recognize for the record that there are some questions that I had in committee um, that Councilmember Mosqueta and Council Central Staff, Tracy Ratcliffe, helped me answer. I was concerned um, that uh, we were still, there was still a gap in the uh, types of acquisitions that we were prioritizing, and it's been confirmed for me that the legislation does in fact include, include legislation that prioritizes the acquisition of existing occupied buildings, not just land. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. So, let's see. All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Member Peterson?
Yes.
Member Swant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation. We've gone to item number nine. Councilmember Herbold again will be speaking on behalf of Councilmember Mosqueta. Madam Clerk, will you please read item nine into the record?
Agenda Item Nine, Council Bill One Two Zero Three Three Eight, An Ordinance Relating to Grant Funds from Non-City Sources, Authorizing the Human Services Department to Accept Specified Grants and Execute Related Agreements for and on behalf of the city. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you. Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you so much. This legislation authorizes the Human Services Department to accept six grants from state and federal agencies totaling three-point-two-million dollars, and it also um, provides the budget authority that is tied to the grant agreements. These grants will provide funding that will increase housing services for people with HIV/AIDS, will expand access to COVID-nineteen response programs for older adults, continue care management and elder abuse intervention programs for older adults, will provide eligible veterans the opportunity to receive home and community-based services, and will also continue crime victim assistance and victim services programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any comments? Okay, before we go to a vote, Councilmember Herbold, anything you want to add before we move on?
Good.
You don't want to thank anybody? You're good?
Council President?
Yes, I didn't see. Who had to hand it?
That's Strauss. Just wanted to thank you, Council President.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, all right, seen, uh, we will go ahead. Madam Clerk, will you please call the um, roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Swant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation. Moving on into our agenda to item number ten, uh, Councilmember Herbold. Go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Um, the clerk has to read it to the record.
Agenda Item Ten, Council Bill One Two Zero Three Four Zero, An Ordinance Relating to the Department of Finance and Administrative Services. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Now, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you so much. This legislation authorizes a lease of property near the I-five and I-ninety interchange, referred to as the Royal Brom property uh, by the City of Seattle from the Washington State Department of Transportation. The lease will enable the Seattle Department of Transportation to continue using the property for equipment, storage, and parking, and applies retroactively to twenty-seventeen, when SDOT first began using the property for this purpose.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Are there any, any comments? Anything else, Councilmember Herbold? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Swant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbold?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, again, please affix my signature to the legislation. That concludes um, our um, committee reports. So moving to items removed from the consent calendar, there were no items removed from the consent calendar. Moving to adoption of other resolutions, I understand there are no other resolutions or adoptions today. Um, in regards to other business, I want to note for the record, which I apologize for not saying at the outset, that Councilmember Mosqueta has indeed been excused from today's uh, council meeting. Um, before I adjourn, is there any other business to come before council? Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. I'd like to request to be excused on um, uh, August, I believe it's August second. Um, and actually, uh, August second, I'm asking for the full council meeting. I should probably request for um, August first as well for a briefing.
So that's August first and second, which is Monday and Tuesday. All right. Councilmember Herbold has asked to be excused. Is there anyone that has a problem with that? Indeed, you are excused, Councilmember Herbold, August first and August second. Um, I'm guessing this, you could celebrate your birthday, finally. All right. So with that, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't see someone else's hand. Who else?
Councilmember Strauss requesting to be excused on August fifteenth and sixteenth from briefing and full council, respectively.
All right. Councilmember Strauss is asked to be excused Monday and Tuesday, August fifteenth and sixteen. Seeing no um, opposition to that, you are indeed excused, Councilmember Strauss. I didn't see your hand on the panel. That's the problem, Councilmember Strauss. I apologize. So before we adjourn, uh, we've already gotten the um, excused absences out of the way. Um. Madam Clerk, do I need to make a motion for the excused absences?
Uh, yes, we should. Um, it can, it can be a, um, doesn't have to be the formal motion. If there's no objection, those absences.
Okay, if there's no objection, those absences are approved. Okay. Colleagues, that concludes our business for today, and our next council meeting is, um, as you know, Monday is a holiday. And uh, we will be back for council meeting on Tuesday, July fifth. We are adjourned. Thank you.